For August 27, 2018. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Kristi Davis.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, you have in front of you in your packet the study session notes of August 6, 2018. If there are no corrections, we will let those minutes stand as presented. And I see none, so the minutes are approved as presented, or the notes, actually. I don't believe we have anything in the proclamations and ceremonies. We do have, we will move to our citizens' right to speak, and we have several people signed up. Our first one, and you're going to have to help me out with your name. Niva Valtiera?
It's Nivea.
Nivea, please come to the podium, if you would, and introduce yourself. Bing Walker will be following, he's on deck, and if you would please give us your, give us your name and spell your last name and an address, please.
Hi, my name is Bing Walker. I'm with Jefferson County Public Health in Lakewood, and I'm the logistics coordinator for the Communities That Care Initiative here in Jefferson County, which focuses on preventing youth substance misuse, violence, and hopelessness and anxiety. Research shows that youth from CTC communities were 37% less likely to binge drink, 25% less likely to engage in crime, and 32% more likely to have abstained from the use of any illegal drugs. For now, the Jeffco CTC communities include Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Edgewater, with the targeted schools of Creighton and Everett Middle Schools, and Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Jefferson Junior/Senior High Schools, including Longview and McLean. This past spring, we hired 21 youth interns representing those high schools to conduct youth focus groups. The analyzed results were intuitive and insightful with regards to youth perspectives of substance misuse, violence, hopelessness, and adult relationships with youth. This summer, we continue to hire youth interns to conduct a youth town hall and develop fact sheets. We have one of those interns from Wheat Ridge High School here with us tonight to present to you about the findings and experiences. A few of you are already involved with Jefferson County Communities That Care, such as Councilor Janice and Chief Daniel Brennan, who are on our key leaders board. If you or anyone you know might be interested in getting involved in this community change process, please contact us, and we've already passed out some brochures and handouts for you.
Hello, my name's Nivea, and I'm from Wheat Ridge High School. I'm an intern for Valtiera, Nivea Valtiera, and I'm an intern for Jefferson County Public Health Communities That Care. I'm here today to talk to you about youth substance misuse, violence, and hopelessness. A third of youth reported feeling depressed, according to the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. In our focus groups, youth reported feeling uncomfortable with sharing with adults. Since they don't feel safe talking to adults, community resources could be used to implement a form of peer counseling. Data shows that at least 14% of high school students have been physically forced to have sex when they did not want to. During a youth focus group, we discovered that teens themselves felt that sexual assault is much more common than the data shows. This type of violence is extremely harmful to our community. Substance misuse means when a teenager between the ages of 14 to 18 uses drugs, specifically marijuana, alcohol, or prescription medications. According to the 2017 Healthy Kids Colorado Survey, about 1 in 5 Colorado high school youth have used marijuana in the last 30 days, and 1 in 3 have used alcohol in the same time period. In the focus group, we found that many teens reported using marijuana mainly to cope with stress caused by school, friends, or family because they feel that they have no one to confide in without receiving punishment in return. We also found that many teens who need or want help for either drugs or mental health do not reach out because they feel like they don't know what will happen after they tell an adult. Since the percentages are as high as I mentioned, I think it's time our community city resources should be applied. I'd like to thank you for listening and encourage you to get involved with CTC.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight, we appreciate it. Our next speaker is Bob Brazel, with Dorothy Archer on deck.
I was looking at the Wheat Ridge Connection paper the other day, and article on the recent survey we had conducted. As far as the ADUs, you asked about restrictions, and the majority of people, if they said if we had ADUs, they would want to limit the number of people and ensure the architectural compatibility with the existing homes, require off-street parking, owner must live in one of the two units, the size of the ADU should be restricted. That's all fine and dandy, but you didn't tell anybody how you plan to enforce any of this and how much it will cost. I mean, when you conduct a survey, you should have a little information in there. The only way I can see this working is if you require a license for the ADUs and a substantial daily fine for all violations. The license should not run with the property after a sale. The ADU should be subject to all fire and safety codes and subject to annual inspections. Has anybody talked to Denver Water to see if they'll require a new TAP? I don't think Denver Water wants to be using a whole lot more people on the, on the TAPs that exist. In order to make all this work, if you're going to need to increase the, in order to make all this stuff work, you're going to have to increase the city staff for inspections, planning, licensing, legal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not going to be cheap. I'm personally opposed to ADUs because I believe they will negatively affect the property values and our quality of life. And such a drastic change to our zoning should go to a vote of the citizens. But if you decide to do this on your own, the fees, however you set them up, should pay for the cost and enforce the restrictions put on them. The rest of us shouldn't have to pay for somebody else creating a duplex in a single-family area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dorothy Archer.
I'm Dorothy Archer, 3640 Marshall Street. I would like to thank Mr. DeTulio and Janice Hoppe. They came to my rescue. My last presentation to you was to, "Somebody help me. Help me get through this so we can get on with it. I don't want to be here for the next year either." Yes, we had a meeting last Thursday. Since Ms. Hoppe is District 1, and I'm District 1, Ms. Duran is District 1, but she was unable to attend, so Mr. Matthews was in her place. There were three other citizens besides myself. Eeyore, Mike Ebson. We discussed the bulk plane and the height. I said somewhere we have to meet a compromise, this can't go on indefinitely. Again, I brought up the fact that Edgewater does not go past 30 feet. I double-checked that again last week to make sure that that has not changed. Mike from Mountain View, I still have his message to me on my cellphone, I saved it, nothing over 30 feet. So if we get at least the bulk plane addressed for all zones, then of course we can go then with height. I believe that a motion will be made that this be taken up in study session so we can all move forward with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of the people I had signed up on the sheet to speak. Is there anyone here in the city council chambers who would like to speak on citizens' right to speak? Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and I will ask counselors for, see if there's any changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda as presented. We'll go to item number one. Mr. Urban, would you introduce item number one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to approve each one altogether. Motion to approve payment to Insight Public Sector in the amount of $76,958.42 for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. Resolution 55-2018 approving the 2018 Police Recruit Training Amendment, Training Agreement to provide law enforcement academy training for six Wheat Ridge Police Officers, Police recruits at the Combined Regional Academy. Resolution 51-2018 authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between the County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, and the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 6, 2018.
Is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Urban, or okay? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthews was on, on top of it. We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll go to item number two. And Ms. Duran, would you please introduce item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 24-2018, An Ordnance Extinguishing Any Rights or Interests Held By the City in a Slope Easement PE-55A Associated with Taft Court, a Public Roadway. Issue: The City of Wheat Ridge holds in trust for the public a slope easement designated PE-55A easement along the easterly side of Taft Court for the purpose of maintaining a roadway embankment. A landowner wishes to develop the area of land laying east of Taft Court that includes the embankment currently encumbered by the easement. To allow development of the land, the easement must be extinguished.
Thank you. This is a, an ordinance on second reading and a public hearing. Will the clerk please provide an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1650, and just so that no one is confused, this is the number that, when a, when an ordinance fails, we reuse the number. So this is a number that was assigned to an ordinance that failed, so we're reusing that number.
Thank you. That's good for the economy. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a report?
We do, a very brief one. Mark Westberg is here, nope, just to answer questions.
Just here to answer questions. I just, sorry, I just realized the computer wasn't on, and we upgraded some drives, and so I'm disconnecting, I'll have to log back on. So fortunately, we don't have a presentation for the next two things.
That's, that's very good.
But I do have lots of presentations.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to open this up for questions from council on item number two. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Duran, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 24-2018, An Ordnance Extinguishing Any Rights or Interests Held by the City in a Slope Easement PE-55A Associated with Taft Court on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Matthews. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will now move to item number three. Mr. Pond, would you introduce item number three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to present Council Bill Number 25-2018, An Ordnance Vacating Any Interests Held by the City in a Portion of Ridge Road, a Public Roadway. At issue, the City of Wheat Ridge holds rights of way in trust for the public. The Ridge Road right-of-way acquired by the Regional Transportation District and recently conveyed to the city is excessively wide between Taft Court and Tabor Street. The recently constructed street, which meets the current street standards, can be accommodated within the narrower right-of-way. A strip of right-of-way approximately 20 feet in width along the north side of Ridge Road between Taft Court and Tabor Street has been deemed to be excessive and unnecessary by public works.
Thank you. This is a ordinance on second reading and a public hearing. Will the clerk please provide us with an ordinance number?
This is ordinance number 1653.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. We have, we have Mr.
Just here to answer questions.
Mr. Westberg here to answer questions. I will open this up for questions from council. Seeing none, will the, do we have a motion on the table?
No.
Okay, Mr. Pond, would you please provide a motion?
Happily. I move to approve Council Bill Number 25-2018, An Ordnance Vacating Any Interests Held by the City in a Portion of Ridge Road on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Davis. Is there discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Oh, I didn't, hold on. Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
You're all so agreeable tonight, who would have known?
We have, we will go to agenda item number four. Mr. Matthews, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four, Motion to Award a Contract and Approve Subsequent Payments to Short Elliott Hendrickson Inc., Denver, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $643,636 for professional services for the design of 52nd Avenue, Ridge Road, and Tabor Streets. At issue, Ward Station Planning Area is one of four projects in the city's investing for the future bond program, which is benefiting from $12 million from the voter-approved temporary one-half cent sales and use tax rate increase. Improvements to 52nd Avenue, Ridge Road, and Tabor Street have been identified and prioritized as infrastructure projects for the station area. Professional design services are required to move forward with the projects. Because of the complexity and magnitude of these activities, the services of an outside consulting firm are needed to provide the design for these projects and prepare the construction plans. It is expected that professional services will be needed over at least the next two years, depending on the timing and prioritization of potential projects.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a report tonight on this?
We do, Mr. Westberg does have a PowerPoint presentation for this.
Okay, Mr. Westberg, we're looking forward to a press, to a brief presentation.
Thank you. So again, this is for the Wheat Ridge Ward Station Area Design Consultant. We're just going to talk about what the projects are, what the design fees are related to those projects, and then what our schedule is that we've gotten from the consultant. We told them be aggressive, and they were. So these, this is the project map that's included in, that we've, we've shown you a couple of times, we showed you in the update earlier this year, of all the things that have sort of risen to the top. What we're talking about tonight, the things that have risen most to the top, are 52nd Avenue, Tabor Street, and Ridge Road, the three street projects. These are the ones that we think are the highest priority. We've got some developments happening in this area, and also in this area, that are, that we think it's a good idea to get 52nd designed, so we can, we can build all or part of that, things thing with Tabor Street. And then Arvada has a potential development happening here, we've got some more happening over here, and we think this piece of Ridge, this piece of Ridge is very substandard right now, we want to get that upgraded, so it's not this strange little gap because RTD built a really nice portion of Ridge for us here along their station, between the west end of their station and Tabor Streets. We want to get that connection made. As development continues along this corridor, the, the road continues to be improved, and we'd have this sort of weird little gap right before you get into our station area. So those are the three streets that have, have risen to the top. The design fees are totaling just, just over $640,000. 52nd Avenue is the longest and the biggest, and so it's, it's about half that. Tabor Street's quite a bit less, it's a little less than a fourth, and then Ridge is a little higher. There's just some complexities with Ridge down there that are going to require a little more work. We're also proposing a cost share on 52nd Avenue. That boundary is, I describe it as psychotic. The boundary we have, ours is pretty normal, but then Arvada and Jeffco bounce in and out on the north side, and so we're working with both those jurisdictions, Jefferson County and the City of Arvada on an IGA right now to cost share the, the cost of 52nd Avenue. What's in the IGA right now, pending a traffic analysis, is that we would pay 40%, Arvada pays 40%, and Jeffco pays 40%.
Twenty.
About, or 20%, yeah, thank you. We've got about 40% of the entire roadway, or maybe, maybe 50% of the entire roadway on our side, we've got pretty much the entire south half. The Arvada and the Jeffco pieces are swapped when you look at the land area, Jeffco has a lot more than Arvada does, but we're all blaming a whole lot of Arvada traffic on our traffic issues up there. So that's why we're, we're trying to get them on the hook for a bigger chunk of it, and so far, Arvada's pretty much agreed to that, their city managers agreed that some split similar to this would be what we'd be moving forward. It might move a few percentage points up or down either way. Future projects, we have a pedestrian bridge and then a linear park on the south side of the tracks that, that we're working on concept plans for right now. Those are the other two projects that seem to be rising towards the top. This other part of the linear park up in here is going to be completed in part by this redevelopment, so we don't really need to do anything on the north side. It's mostly getting the bridge to get across the tracks and the park on the south side. The, and they, they kind of go hand in hand. If we don't build the park, we have a bridge to nowhere, if we don't build the bridge, we sort of have a linear park to nowhere. So those two projects likely are going to go hand in hand. Our design schedule is, is really aggressive. We hope to have a kickoff meeting on September 7, pending the outcome of tonight's meeting. We'd have 30% plans by sometime in November, and then in January, 60% plans, 90% plans in March, we'd pretty much be done with the plans in April. We've got some other things, then we've got a seat-out permit. We're going to be rebuilding the signal at Ward and 52nd, so we've got a seat-out permit to pull in the midst of all that, so we're not going to be ready to go out to construction right after the, the plans are done in April, but, but hopefully within a month or two after that, we'll be ready to go. The public outreach that we have planned so far, which is what we just sort of normally do on our CIP projects, is when we get to that 60% plan stage, we like to share what we've got so far. We've got most of the issues worked out from an engineering standpoint, to, to share that with the public. We would come to you in January before that open house that we'd have, that we would also have Arvada and Jeffco staff at hosting because they got half the street, and, and basically do a presentation to you all in study session to, to just show you what we've got so far before we, we roll it out to the public. We are planning some additional public outreach. As soon as our IGA is signed, we're going to be meeting with Jeffco and Arvada to, to do some additional outreach for the folks that live right along the street and might be most heavily impacted by the various things. That'll be happening this fall and this winter, as we, as we get towards that sort of public open house, which is just for the general public. So sort of similar to those block-by-block meetings we've been doing on Wasworth and stuff, just to, to get everybody up to speed on what's happening out in front of, of their houses and stuff, because this is, by and large, where people live. So our big next step is to get our IGA finalized with Arvada and Jeffco, where we'd have them helping to sign off on this, this contract also, but we haven't done that yet, and we really want to get these guys rolling. We've got to hire a right-of-way consultant, we're going to start that process here in the next couple of weeks by advertising that, that request for qualifications from firms that do that sort of thing. We'd hope to come see you before the end of the year with a contract ready in hand so that right-of-way consultant could start right off the, right off the bat in January. We've identified some areas that we think we need some right-of-way. Ridge Road, east of Tabor, and then 52nd east of Tabor, the right, existing right-of-ways are very narrow, they're 40 feet and 35 feet, which we just can't even fit a street in, much less a sidewalk or so. So we're, we're looking at those areas as potentially having to buy some right-of-way. We haven't really nailed all that down yet. We'll have that figured out before that consultant comes on board. And then again, just to finish those ped bridge and linear park concepts, come and present those to hopefully to you all sometime this fall or, or before the end of the year, and then we'd enter into another couple of task orders with SEH to design those two projects also. So this is sort of a, an on-call contract for the things we're designing up at the Ward Road TOD area. It's just because of timing, we were able to not just approve the contract, but also these first three task orders that we've got with them. And then that's it.
Thank you. I would, I don't have anyone from the public signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone here that would like to come and speak on this from the public? And I don't see anyone, so I will open it up to questions from city council. Questions, Mr. Westberg, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had some residents come up and speak about some controversy up there, and I'm not sure if it's this piece precisely about 52nd Avenue, I believe, where they were promised that, that the street would never be going through, and there were things from Arvada and things from here. Is that still a bone of contention? Has it been settled? Or are we going to be into a right-of-way hassle down the road?
It has not been settled. And yeah, there, there, this is the street where we've had some, some folks come to city council meetings. Also, there's been numerous emails, I think we've had one recently the last few weeks, which you were all copied on. And there's some, there's some history up here, for sure, and that's why I directed staff to make sure that we have a very public outreach process, that we're, we're getting input from them, which I have promised to them all along, that we haven't, we haven't designed anything yet, and as we go through the process, we want to hear from you, and, and then obviously it has to go to city council for approval. So Arvada's kind of in the same boat at this time. They are hearing from some of the same residents, both in Wheat Ridge and in Arvada, so they have the project that Mark mentioned, the Haskins Station project, that they would like 52nd Avenue to, to go through to Ward also. So that's why we're working so closely with Arvada on this. So you are correct, Larry, there's, this, this will require some, a lot of discussions with the neighborhood.
Okay. It would be appropriate to settle those before we start spending a lot of money? I mean, I understand time requirements and what have you, but before we get too far down the road?
Well, we will start some of those discussions before we get too far down with the final design, but it's hard to have specific discussions if you don't have at least a 60% design, because then we know how it's, what it's going to impact, what right-of-ways would be needed. So until then, it's, it's kind of guessing.
Okay, and I'm not saying we're doing anything nefarious, I just.
Sure.
I've not seen anything from my constituents up there that's given me any written paper trail or whatever to follow, it's just been their presentations here that they were promised. So just, I need to know for sure what, where we're at, and that we are still considering their, their requests for.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing set in stone at this point. We're, we're designing or proposing to design based on the development that's happening up there, but there's always neighborhood concerns that we have to take into account during that process, so.
Understood, thank you.
Ms. Dozeman?
So are we, are there still plans to widen the road, which would require us acquiring some property in that area?
Some areas, I'll let Mark maybe speak to that.
So, so west of Tabor Street, and I can, I can pull that map back up if it helps, something helps people look at things. West of Tabor Street, which is, which is from Ward Road to Tabor, we've got 60 feet of right-of-way between what we have and what Jefferson County and Arvada have already. We've got a street section very conceptually designed that'll fit within that 60 feet of right-of-way. We'll need, you know, some temporary easements and things outside of that, just to be able to step off to set forms and that kind of thing, and possibly some grading or something. The portion east of, of Tabor is where the existing right-of-way shrinks, right at this first property, it shrinks to 35 feet. There's 35 feet on the Jefferson County Arvada side, and there's only five feet on our side of the street. Now, because the houses on that south side are built so close, we're probably going to want to widen towards the north if we do anything through there. So that, it's that portion east of Tabor that we're looking at possibly requiring some right-of-way, depending on where we land on our final street section.
Or other options, there could be other options where there's a narrower section there, or, you know, the, the street doesn't, doesn't punch through. Both Arvada's staff and Wheat Ridge staff recommend that it does punch through, but again, there's. again, there's right-of-way issues that have to be considered.
And what we're planning west of Tabor, sorry, I meant to say this too, is a three-lane section. So it's a three-lane in each direction plus a center turn lane, and then detached sidewalks on our side. What we've conceptually drawn up for east of Tabor is just a two-lane road with attached sidewalks. So we've really shrunk the section down considerably in order to fit in as little as right-of-way as we possibly can on that east side, assuming that that part of it goes forward.
So I think Larry and I are referencing the same email chain that kind of went back and forth in regards to this project. I think that we would have a lot of backlash from that neighborhood if this email indicates anything of what we may see down the road. And I also had questions about, so they're going to be voting in Arvada about the Haskins Station sometime in September?
I believe it goes in September, yes, September 10th.
10th is my understanding.
Yep. It did go to their planning commission, and their planning commission denied it, but the developer made quite a bit of changes to the project. And it's our understanding, planning commission denied it because of the density. There was quite a bit of multifamily product that was going to go in the project, and the developer has changed that quite a bit, and they're going to take it to council and see if they can get approval from council.
So if Arvada does not move forward with their plans to redevelop this area, are they still going to contribute to some of the infrastructure improvements?
Yes, yes. Our understanding is, assuming that we all approve and sign the IGA, that'll be coming later to you and to their council and to the Board of County Commissioners. If that all gets approved, then yes, they'll still contribute regardless of what happens with that Haskins Station, because it's a big, giant blank piece of ground. It's going to develop someday, so it's just a matter of time for them.
Mr. Matthews?
Along with, you know, the interior issues here, you know, we share that common boundary with Ridge Road going all the way back to the east and west. Have we talked to Arvada about a future configuration for Ridge Road going all the way back to the east and the fact that we may get a lot of more traffic on it now with coming down, if our station's the closest to folks, so that we're going to be in concert with the future development?
Yeah, there was what's called a catalytic study done that Dr. Cog helped us with a few years ago, I think two years ago or three years ago that was done. I wasn't directly involved in that. But it came up with a couple of different street sections for Ridge Road. On the developments, the Quail Run development that is currently being built right here, the houses are going up, they did that final street section in their piece. Our understanding is if Haskins Station moves forward, that they'll be doing that in their piece. The boundary is not shared so much as it bounces in and out, you know? So this piece of Ridge is Arvada's, and they would be making the Haskins folks, or whoever comes later, improve their piece to that standard. So there'll be a couple of gaps just right around Parfitt Street, but otherwise, we'd have that full street standard all the way to Miller Street.
Okay, so we do have consistency in agreement, at least in theory, with Arvada going all the way up and down the Bean Row.
Yeah, and I think Mark mentioned that the cost sharing was just specifically for 52nd. Arvada is also likely to cost share on some of these other roads too that impact them. Jefferson County is the one that we're having a little more difficulty with.
Struggling.
They're, they only want to provide cost sharing on 52nd, and they're actually asking, just a heads up, to, for the city to take over the maintenance of the road. So I'm not sure if that will be coming forward yet or not, but we're pushing back on that a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the elements in this agreement suggests that the city would be providing the traffic data and volume counts for the area. How are we providing that information, and are we using a specific model to provide that information? And are we able to actually provide that?
Yes. So AE Comm, who is serving as our staff extension on all of our 2E projects, is actually finishing up that traffic study right now for the traffic on 52nd, on Tabor Street, on Ridge. They're doing a very comprehensive thing. They've taken, all the traffic sites have been done up there for the last five years in compiling all those and getting them balanced and doing all the magic that traffic engineers do to try to project what the future traffic's going to be, assuming all of these redevelopments that are currently in play right now do go through. And that's what we're basing the cost share on, not today's traffic, but that future traffic.
And as it relates to the assumption that the right-of-way permits will be waived, obviously, the city can do that on its own, but there is other entities in that area. How do we know, how do we assume those right-of-way permits will be waived for those other entities?
I believe that's in the IGA. It talks about permits between the two agencies, and since we're taking the lead on this because we care the most about it, apparently. So we've talked with those, C-DOT probably won't waive theirs, but we do believe Arvada and Jeffco will do that, and I believe that's in the IGA. It's been a couple of weeks since I've read that, but that should be in there, that we're going to waive permits towards each other on various things.
Okay. And then my last question is relative to the lighting. It's indicating that those would be city-owned light poles, and why are we owning those versus Excel?
We've been doing that on all of our projects lately. When LED lights first came out, Excel did not give us a price break on the lights. They said you're going to pay the same amount as you would for the old, whatever it was we had out there before. And so we said, fine, we'll just own all the lights and do them all to our standards, and we'll do that. So we've, it's been about four years now that, or five years, that we've been doing that, that we've been building all the lights and we've been keeping them. We just get a better deal with the LED lights than we do with Excel.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion. Mr. Matthews?
I move toward a contract and approve subsequent payments to Short Elliott Hendrickson, Inc., Denver, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $643,636 for professional services for the design of 52nd Avenue, Ridge Road, and Tabor Street.
Second?
Second by Ms. Duran. Do we have discussion amongst council on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, would you please introduce item number five?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to HDR Engineering, Inc., Denver, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $2,144,931 for Phase Two final design of the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project. Issue in April 2015, the city was awarded funding through the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog's Transportation Improvement Program, tip to improve Wadsworth Boulevard from 35th to 48th Avenue in October of 2015. The council adopted the Planning and Environment Pell Study. The study identified traffic congestion and safety issues, developed multimodal solutions and identified related environmental issues. On March 28, 2016, council approved a contract with HDR to complete Phase One. The survey conceptual 30% design and plans and prepared the environmental assessment. Preparation of Phase One documents is nearing completion, which allows for commencing Phase Two preliminary and final design. Phase Two includes preparation of construction plans expected to begin in mid-October 2018. City staff recommends HDR for Phase Two work and has negotiated the scope and fee in the amount of $2,144,931.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this one?
We do. It's the Mark Westburg Show this evening.
Mr. Westburg, please continue with another brief presentation.
The plus side, we're getting it all done tonight.
You know?
So tonight, we're just going to talk about the design contract. I wanted to give you a quick update on the VE public outreach, the value engineering public outreach that we did since our last time we met. Just some funding and scheduling updates and some things that have changed, again, since the last time we met, and then where we are on the next steps. So the design contract is a little over $2 million. There's actually $164,000 of that as to finish off the environmental work. We, again, just continue to put a lot of money into that part of it, but we are nearing the finish line on that. And rather than come back for another contract in Phase One, we just rolled it into this design contract to try to make things a little easier. So the actual design part of this is just under $2 million. The funding sources, CIP, our Fund 30 is doing 80% of this. That will be reimbursed by the Dr. Cog fund, or the funding that we got. And then the other 20%, our local match for that comes from our 2E Fund 31 for the Wadsworth Project, that's $7 million that we have. So just a quick update. We came back to you on June 4th and talked about what we were on value engineering. We got a consistent move forward with the things we're moving forward with. We had a couple of block meetings. On June 13th, we did one at 4:00 and one at 6:00, just trying to catch people that might be at work and wanted to be here during that time and that kind of stuff. We had quite a few people show up for those. We invited a lot of the neighborhoods on either side of Wadsworth from like 44th North to get this impact. The big thing about that was the 48th Avenue cul-de-sacking on the east side. And then we've had some individual meetings. We had some before that block-by-blocks with some of the, what we thought were the most impacted folks, just to meet with them individually. And then we had some folks that couldn't make it to the 13th, and so we've met with them individually after that also, and with some small groups on that also. So we've met with those folks. A lot of people initially are sort of like, what are you doing? You know, you're closing our street. And then we mentioned the fact that there's 1,000 cars a day driving down 48th Avenue, and that there probably wouldn't be. Some of the folks in 48th Avenue saw this as a positive, some other folks sees it negative. So we'll continue to get feedback from all those folks as we continue to move forward. We've actually had a couple of folks on the west side, want to cul-de-sac 48th Avenue on the west side now. They seem to be inspired. I said we can't do it with the Wadsworth Project, but maybe some other time. So the future public outreach, we're going to have our EA public hearing, the required hearing that we have to do in February of 2019, late February. And then in fall of 19, we'll have another, just sort of our general sort of public meeting to let everybody know where we are with the design. We'll have the 90% plans pretty well along by then. We just want to show people what we're doing, give them an update. And then we're going to have individual meetings as people continue to call and ask questions and that kind of thing. We're always available for that kind of stuff. I'm actually going to, setting up a meeting with the guys at First Bank there at Wads and 44th to meet with them about what our new plan, how our new plan is impacting them. So this slide hasn't changed. This is all the identified project funding that we've got today, which gives us these totals from the various sources. That slide really hasn't changed either. The city funding, I just wanted to point out a couple of things on that. Our required local match for the tip is at just over $6 million. We had spent about just over a quarter million dollars before the 2E funding became available for our local match. And so when the $7 million of 2E funding came available, that gives us that seven and a quarter million that we've got available to us. So the 2E funding, about $6 million of that goes to fulfill that 2014 tip local match, which gives us, we basically have an overmatch of about a million dollars, just under a million dollars available to us as we move forward. And our thought with that was that we'd use that to try to match some of the monies to try to close our funding gap. After the value engineering process, we think our new cost estimate right now is about $45.1 million. We're spending just under a million and a half in environmental. We'll be spending a total of $2.8 million on design. $800,000 of that was spent during the environmental phase to get the design forward far enough to be able to do the environmental work. And then we think our right-of-way acquisition, we're hoping on the high side is going to be $14.5 million, but I just sold my house a few months ago for twice what I paid for. I'm a little nervous about the right-of-way costs. Construction costs, we think, are about $26 million. So our gap that we've got is a very exact number. Don't read too much into that, just the way the math works out. We've got a little under $6 million in gap right now from what we're figuring. Our 2014 tip grant that we got, that original grant we got, actually stopped at 48th Avenue. We had gotten some information not to touch the ramps on the interstate, to open up this whole process. Turns out that was wrong, so we're touching the ramps now. But we never really accounted for that additional scope of work with the funding. There wasn't a way to do that. Well, there sort of is now. We've got another tip going on, a Transportation Improvement Program, is actively going on right now. And what we're planning on doing is submitting for a regional or subregional combination thereof. The mayor knows way more about this stuff than I do. If you have questions, he can help us. And so the federal match would be a little over $5 million. Our local match would be a little over a million dollars for that additional 6.6. And that 6.6 is bigger than the 5.8, but we're, part of that money is that million dollars we already had. So we need additional, maybe $400,000 to meet our local match for that particular tip. There is, just the way the funding's working out, I've got a big spreadsheet for all this stuff. There's another $200,000 that we'd need, assuming that we do the $45.1 million. If that number comes in lower, then we'll need less than that. And so a total of maybe $600,000 is what we're projecting right now that we need later on in 2020 to 2022 to finish off the funding on this, assuming we hit $45.1 million. So we're trying really hard to reduce our right-of-way costs, and I think we're doing a great job of that. Our consultant told me today that the number's probably a lot less than 14, so hopefully we're going to be in really good shape on that piece of it. C-DOT has also, in one of their ballot initiatives, I think they've got more than one, but at least one of them, they've got a funding for $5 million shown for Wadsworth for this project as a part of that. So if that goes through, that's $5 million we've got coming towards us. Now, if we end up with more money than we need, we just end up giving some of it back to Dr. Cog, and they then disperse that out through a means of sort of a second tier of folks. So our schedule is that the draft EA, that's today, we started receiving parts of that today. We got, I think, five of 13 technical reports today. We should get the rest of technical reports prior. We'll actually get the draft EA on Wednesday of this week. Our consultants, AE Comm, are estimating it's going to take 120 staff hours to review all those documents, is why Lorne and I aren't doing it, we're having them do it. We're going to look over the red lines and look over the documents, but that's why we have them as a resource to do this, because it's a really, really labor-intensive effort. We hope to have the review of that EA done in January of 19, and then we'll have that public hearing that we mentioned earlier in February. And then soon after that, we hope to have our historical mitigation complete, the signage stuff that we're doing on the bus stops that we talked about back in June. So that does take a very long process to go through and ship on everything. Normally, you'd have to have all that done before you can start doing your design stuff, but C-DOT and FHWA have both given us permission to proceed because they know we've got a plan, and they think the plan's a good plan for mitigation. And so they're allowing us to go ahead and proceed on that and get going. So again, we hope to have that Fonzie, that finding of no significant impact in the summer of 19, that closes out the environmental process for this project. So the construction plans, again, we just hope to have the preliminary plans in spring of 19, fall of 19, have final plans. That's where that other open house kind of meeting would be. And then we hope to have our bid plans done in January, February of 2020. The right-of-way acquisition, we're going to, it actually was advertised today for the request for qualifications for that. So we hope to come to you in December of 2018, December 10th, I think is the only council meeting we'll have, to get that right-of-way contract approved, to start acquiring right-of-way. And then we have those completed by sometime in early 2020 also, about the same time that plans are completed. And then again, construction, we think's going to last two years, run from middle of 2020 through '22. So our next step right now is to get this right-of-way consultant onboard. That's our really big step from a city staff standpoint, besides just managing the project and keeping it moving forward. And I think that's all I've got on that one, too.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open this up to anyone in the city council chambers, the public that would like to speak on this. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but I want to make sure that we have the opportunity there. And I don't show anyone coming forward, so I'll open the discussion up to our city councilors. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You indicated that the design work would be about $3 million. Is that right?
It's 2.8 total, but we've already spent $800,000 of that during the conceptual plans that went with the environmental assessment.
I guess, as it relates to the environmental assessment under Phase One, that contract was something in the order of 1.8 million, including all the amendments. So why is that $164,000 in this contract as opposed to being billed to the previous contract?
It was just easier to, in our mind, it was easier to add it to this one and put it in this contract because we were coming to you with this one rather than doing another amendment for that one. We're going to keep it all separate in our internal billing and the internal invoicing and stuff, and the stuff that we send to C-DOT for compensation, for reimbursement. So to everyone outside the city, it's going to look like all of that money's coming out of environmental phase, not out of design phase. So that'll all be kept separate. It was just easier to lump it into this and bring it to you guys all at once.
But I guess, as I'm looking at this, Phase 2 is 2.1 million, Phase 1 is 1.8 million. That's $4 million total. And that's what I'm, when you indicated the lesser number for the total cost, it seems like we're at about $4 million in...
Yeah, so the, the 1.5 is where we are with the environmental. That, that environmental phase includes the 160. This total I'm giving you, the 1.5 includes that 164.
But we're already at 1.8.
We're at 1.8 for the entire Phase 1 contract that included conceptual design, which was, we spent about $800,000 of that. So, 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 sorry, this slide's a little bit confusing. It's not broken up by contracts, it's broken up by phase, the way CDOT looks at it. So we've got a million and a half total on environmental, and we've got 2.8 total on design.
Okay.
So if you add all that together, then we, we end up with the number that we've got.
So, but why are we doing work in a Phase 2 contract that was required in the Phase 1 contract?
Because the Phase 1 is still going on and will be till next summer. The consultant was the one that requested this, and I didn't have an issue with just lumping all this stuff together and just having one contract amendment for them. So that was, it was just something they requested for the ease of paperwork. We didn't have to do another, another thing, so.
It just seems like we're starting, the, the Phase 1 contract was originally 1.2 million.
Right.
Now it's 1.8 million plus another $164,000, so that's inching up to over $2 million for that.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When do you foresee yourself, or not yourself, but the city, acquiring that property? Because property values are increasing.
They are. I keep hoping for a little bit of a dip, or correction. I think they call them corrections, but... So we would hope to start acquiring right-of-way soon after the right-of-way plans are done. Let me see if I have that, if I can, from my schedule with what I showed you, that I can show you, tell you that number. So the right-of-way plans will be done this spring of 2019. Almost immediately, we'll start trying to acquire right-of-way at that time. We just, we've got to get the right-of-way plans done and approved by CDOT, and we've also got to get the Fonzie in hand before we can start acquiring right-of-way. So, so two of those things together are saying we can't start acquiring right-of-way for a little less than a year.
So does the proposed amount have any wiggle room? I mean, that $14.5 million?
It does. Right now, you know, that, that $14.5 million I, I talked about earlier includes a lot of things that we're doing as what we're showing for the environmental assessment versus full acquisitions, like Bank of the West and a few other properties that we think we can design our way out of having to acquire that property in total. And so, so that's a very, the $14.5 million, we think, is a very conservative number. We think that'll drop quite a bit, based on being able to design our way out of having to buy some of the properties that we're, we're, we're impacting.
How closely have you been speaking to these property owners?
When we have the block-by-block meetings, we invite all those folks up and down the corridor, and so those that come in to see us, we talk to a lot. We've talked to, I would, I don't know the number. We've talked to a lot of them. We've talked to Bank of the West and First Bank, and Mr. Lesher's come to a lot of these things. We've talked to a lot of the property, and some of the, the smaller individual businesses haven't shown up, but most of the big ones have.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
Do we have in our possession here in the city, the traffic counts for current and projected, traffic counts, or do we have to, or does the, is the consultant holding those right now?
We've got them. My memory is that our counts today are around 45,000 cars per day, and what we're building for is around 80,000 cars a day.
Thank you. I'll, I'll talk to you there.
In round numbers.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going back to that, the amendments that were made to Phase 1, what lessons could we learn from Phase 1 to apply to Phase 2, given that the Phase 2 contract's now at 2.1 million? If that grows at the same rate as the Phase 1 contract did, we're going to be widening that gap. So what lessons have we learned from the Phase 1 process that we're going to apply to the Phase 2 process?
I think the big thing there is that I don't think any of us could have foreseen what was going to happen from the historical standpoint. That's the biggest driver in costs. Our, our Phase 1 contract was originally $1.2 million. All the things that happened because of historical was about $600,000. So that, that historical, the redesigns are required, the additional historical work that was done, really due to a change in personnel at CDOT. We've talked to several of the jurisdictions that are doing projects right now on CDOT roadways, and they all have run into the same thing. Their projects have been delayed for a year, they've gone up in cost and all that kind of stuff, because she's very preservationist-minded, is the word I'm using.
Thank you. And then, just as it relates to the cost estimate, in the contract, it indicates that there will be only one cost estimate provided as it relates to this particular contract. Is that going to happen before or after the traffic data extends down to the I-70 ramp?
You know, we've, we've been doing the work down to I-70 since almost the beginning of the project. It's just when we applied for that initial grant, we had stopped at 48th Avenue. So we've been, we've been working for all of that, all the way down to I-70. That's included in the conceptual design we have, it's in the environmental assessment, it's in all the documents we've got, so there's, there's no additional work to do to add that. We're just going to ask for the money now to close that gap, because we added that on our own, because we and CDOT thought it was a great idea to get that, to not have this gap of four lanes of traffic with six lanes on either side.
But why did, why only one cost estimation in this particular process? Would it not be expected that we would have additional hiccups that would cause, cause us to have to redo that cost estimation?
You know, that's a lot of the reason for the environmental assessment, why we took the conceptual design so far. We think we've found the vast majority of the snakes that might be lying in the grass. We've, we've studied everything, we've looked at everything. As we go through these technical reports and all that stuff, we think we've, we've uncovered most of the things that are going to be issues. And that's why our design schedule's fairly aggressive on this, that from now until we're done, you know, we've got a year and 15 or 16 months to, to produce plans for a mile and a quarter, 1.4 miles a quarter, because we've, we've figured most of the things out. It's just a matter of getting all the designs and the plans done now.
So we don't see any additional foreseeable risks related to this?
The biggest risk we've got right now is construction costs and right-of-way costs. Those are our biggest risks. It's not what we've got to do on the ground, it's what's the construction cost going to do. We just had a project come in 30% over budget. Parks has had several projects come in quite a bit over budget. A lot of people are. So, you know, again, we'll just have to see how that plays out as time goes on, so.
Thank you. Any additional questions? I had one, Mr. Westberg. And you're, you, you stop your timeline in early 2020 with the bid plans complete and the acquisitions complete. When do you think that our citizens might see construction activity actually happening on-site? And maybe more importantly, when would they expect it to cease?
Well, we, we, we think it'll take two years to build, based on what happened down south with the, the projects that they've done there. So again, we hope to start construction. I'm saying mid-2020 right now. My schedule shows maybe April of 2020, but things could get delayed there at the end. They often do with getting the final clearances from CDOT. And we think it'll take about two years. So from mid-2020 to mid-2022 is our best guess right now. As we continue down this path during the design work, we get far enough along, we'll start talking more about deadlines and phasing and what we think will, will happen with that.
Thank you. Any additional questions? We're, I believe we're ready for a motion. Ms. Davis.
That's crazy, just how long things take. Anyways, it's just crazy. Anyways, I move to award contract and approve subsequent payments to HDR Engineering, Inc., Denver, Colorado, an amount to exceed, not to exceed, $2,144,931 for Phase 2, final design of the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you very much. We will go to item number six. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce item number six?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 52-2018, a resolution approving a second amendment to the City of Wheat Ridge Gold Line Corridor Local Agency, ever got intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District, transferring ownership of the regional stormwater pond and outfall from the Regional Transportation District to the city. At issue, a second amendment to the Gold Line Corridor Local Agency contribution intergovernmental agreement, IGA, is required between the Regional Transportation District, RTD, and the city concerning the transfer of ownership from RTD to the city of a regional stormwater pond constructed to serve the Gold Line commuter rail system.
Thank you. Do we have a report on this, Mr. Goff?
We do. Mr. Westberg's last presentation.
Westberg, please, please continue with it with another abbreviated presentation.
These are all pretty short tonight for...
Well, you know, that's, that's a great...
I do have a little history, because most of the stuff that relates to what's happened, this may be, it's seeming like it's coming out of left field, because I don't, we've not made any presentations to council about this in a very long time. I think the last time we talked about this was probably 2014. Most of this stuff happened in 2011. So I wanted to give you guys a little bit of history on, on why we're here tonight with the big giant pond that the RTD is wanting to give to us. So when the G-line, we're going to call it the G-line now, because that's what it is. I hear the horns all the time. When that was constructed, basically a limited drainage system was along the north side of the tracks. It was 100-foot right-of-way, there was a track in the middle, the 50 feet on the north side was just basically a big giant water quality swell, even though they didn't know what it was back that day. Everything that drained there pretty much just soaked in the ground, and, and no one had any drainage issues. Well, when they built two tracks that filled that space, suddenly there's nowhere for the water to be. And so, and the nearest downstream storm sewer system was at Miller Street there, at the west end of the Target, that's in Arvada. So it's a long way. It was a really, really long distance to try to figure out what to do with the drainage. So, so Urban Drainage and RTD and Arvada and, and the City of Wheat Ridge, we all got together back in 2011 and collectively came up with this big giant scheme to, to solve, hopefully solve all the drainage problems we've got up in that part of the world, that RTD was sort of causing by their construction of the G-line. So there were two things. There was a ridge road tributary outfall, this is urban drainage terms for these, these storm sewer systems. The other one was Arvada Channel. The box culvert that's in Miller Street, south of Target, is where the Arvada Channel ended back in 2011. And so we got together with, with RTD and, and the cities and Urban Drainage built everything upstream of the big pond, and RTD built the pond and everything downstream of that, down to Oak Street. And then they were going to build a temporary system between Oak and Miller Street, and they got a new drainage engineer who was a little more progressively minded, and he said, "This is stupid. Why are we going to spend like $600,000 or a million, $1,000,000 or a million dollars building a temporary system, and the full system only costs $3 million? This is dumb." So we all got together, again, with a partnership with Urban Drainage, RTD and us, to fund that piece of it, to get that Arvada Channel piece built from Oak Street to Miller Street. So what that looks like is, is this very long convoluted graphic. So the station is up here, that's the blue area that's up here. All the stuff in blue is what RTD built, and they built their tracks that run all the way along here. This is where Target is, and so this is where the system that Arvada had built with Target ended here at Miller Street. With them doing all of this, what we, what we all decided to do is, we and Urban Drainage funded and built this part of the ridge road tributary outfall, and then Arvada built this piece. Their piece seems a lot shorter, but the cost was almost the same as ours, because the pipe gets really, really big down on their part. It's a, I can, it's a box culvert I can walk through. So, and then they built this big pond, and then because this pond is there, but they built a much smaller pipe to here, and then did some open channel work to here, and then again, we built what was called for, which is a 10-by-8 box culvert in this part between Miller and Oak Street. So all of that is the stuff that got built as a result of this sort of trying to solve RTD's drainage problem that they were causing. So what it resulted in for us, which was a huge benefit, the original plans for this was to build a five-year drainage system. You normally build drainage systems for the minor storm event. Because of having the big pond there and the sizes of the stuff we put in, we basically, upstream of Oak Street, we have a hundred-year system. That system will handle the hundred-year flows of what comes to it. So that was a huge benefit for us. The other thing that really benefited us is that we were provided, required to provide a local match, I think it was 1.4 or 1.5 million dollars for the G-line. That was part of our contribution to that line being built. Well, we agreed to say with RTD that, hey, we'll build our segment of ridge road, which we thought would cost about $1.4 million, and that'll be our local match regardless of what the final cost is. And they said, "Yay, let's go do that." Because then it made the accounting really simple for them, and it made it simple for us, too. Urban Drainage paid half of that. Often when you have these master plan projects, if you go to Urban Drainage and they've got the funding available, and they did, they will pay half of those master plan projects. So they essentially paid half of our local match for us. So we got off pretty well with, with RTD and the G-line project. And then on the Arvada Channel piece that we collaborated with them, again, Urban Drainage again paid half. RTD contributed the cost of their temporary project, and then we paid that, that little bit of remainder that was left between, between those two. So the, the big result was that upstream of Miller Street, we had originally estimated back in 2011, when we were first talking with RTD, and said, "We need to do an estimate to see how much this whole thing's going to cost." To build the system that was in the plan from Ward Road to Miller Street was, we estimated to be $8 to $9 million. What we ended with when this was all done was the city final, the city's final cost was $1.15 million. So we thought we got a really good deal in this part of the world when it came to drainage, which we get very excited about getting good deals. So again, the pond we're talking about is this big thing in the middle. It's got about 25 acre feet. That's a, that's a measurement that is just, you know, if it's an acre big, it's 25 feet deep, that kind of a thing. So that's how big that pond is. And why are we doing this? Well, we were talking with RTD back in 2011. RTD is a transit provider. They don't build infrastructure, they don't build ponds, they don't maintain, they don't do those things. We sort of do those things. We're infrastructure. One of the things we do as a city, we provide infrastructure for things. And the other big thing is that RTD, because they're a special district, cannot ask Urban Drainage to help them maintain things. They have to maintain everything themselves. We, as a city, as a part of the Urban Drainage District, can ask Urban Drainage to maintain those things for us. And the other thing that benefits us by having the pond transferred to us is we can do modifications to the pond. If RTD keys the pond, they're under all these FRA rules, these Federal Rail Agency rules, that they can't touch the pond, it's got to stay that way forever. We can do things. We can add water quality to the bottom of the pond, we can make the pond bigger if we need to for some reason. We've already got reasons to do both those things, because of some projects nearby and some projects that we're doing. So the Urban Drainage maintenance, I just wanted to explain a little bit of what that is. It's an incentive program that Urban Drainage has that encourages developers to build to the Urban Drainage standards. And the pond was reviewed and inspected by Urban Drainage, and they've accepted it that it meets their standards. What that then allows you to do as a jurisdiction, not RTD, but us, is we can ask Urban Drainage to basically maintain the pond for us. Even though we're the owners of it, they can maintain the pond for us. And we do have some examples of them doing that in our city. We've got two major drainage ways, Clear Creek and Lena Gulch. And at Clear Creek, they often do stabilization projects at their cost for us. They often do cobble removal when it builds up too much under, like, the 44th Avenue Bridge. They've done it a couple of times since I've been here. And, and when things like the hailstorm in 2009 hit, they came in, removed all the, all the trees that had blown down at no cost to the city, because that's part of them helping us maintain that drainage way. On Lena Gulch, they often do mowing and debris removal. They get the trash out, they go out and mow it once or twice a year, just to try to keep the weeds down and that kind of thing. And for them to maintain this pond, it'll be more like what Lena Gulch is. They'll go out and mow it a couple of times a year, they'll remove the trash around the trash rack and around it. So that's, that's what they, that's what the maintenance thing is. So that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Okay. Do we, let's see, I want to go and make sure that we have an opportunity for any member of the public that's here who would like to speak on this, can come forward now. I don't see anyone, so we'll go to questions from council and start with Mr. Matthews.
We, we knew this was coming all along. Was there, and I'm assuming we had some kind of paperwork agreements on this to start with. Why didn't we just include the transfer and ownership in that original agreement?
There were some, there were some rules that the FRA has, the Federal Rail Agency has, with the funding that they gave RTD, that you couldn't transfer things until the, everything was operational to a point that it's at now. So the same thing with the easement and the right-of-way that you guys sort of gave up earlier this evening, same kind of deal. We had to wait until they got to a point, and then we could move forward with these transfers of property and transfers of facilities and all those things. So that's the reason it's been seven years.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Dozeman, would you provide us a?
Motion?
Yeah.
I move to approve Resolution number 52-2018, a resolution approving a second amendment to the Gold Line Corridor Local Agency Contribution, IGA, with the Regional Transportation District, providing for the transfer of ownership of the regional stormwater facility from RTD to the city. Second.
Second by Ms. Duran. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will move next to item number seven on the agenda. Ms. Hoppe, would you please introduce item number seven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 53-2018, a resolution in support of reauthorization of and full funding for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. At issue, the Land and Water Conservation Fund was initially authorized in 1965 by the President and Congress to conserve parks, open space, wildlife habitat, and enhance recreational opportunities through the development of outdoor amenities. The fund will expire on September 30, 2018. This resolution is in support of reauthorization of full funding for the fund.
And, Mr. Goff, do we have any presentation on this item?
We don't. City Council asked to bring this forward at the last study session, and I think the staff report was fairly self-explanatory.
All right.
And just maybe one thing I'll mention, just for the public, I'll pull it up here. The city has been awarded funding through this, this, this conservation fund. Currently, the improvement's at Johnson Park off of Wadsworth and I-70. We have some funding to improve the trails down there. Anderson Park and Anderson Outdoor Pool also received some funding in the past, so the city does benefit from this, this grant funding.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any, I will open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here in the city council chambers who, from the public, who would like to speak on this? I don't have anyone signed up. But I will, seeing none, we will go forth and see if council has any discussion on this before we have a motion. Seeing none, Ms. Duran, or Ms. Hoppe, would you please provide us with a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number 53-2018, a resolution in support of reauthorization of and full funding for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will move to item number eight. Mr. Fitzgerald, will you introduce this item, please?
Resolution number 54-2018, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $18,000 for the Jeffco Action Center. Issue, since 1968, the Action Center has helped hundreds of thousands of people in Jefferson County facing difficulties with issues relating to hunger, homelessness, and financial stability. The Center's mission is to provide immediate response to basic human needs and promote pathways to self-sufficiency. The Center has recently started a six-month campaign to raise $1 million to address a shortfall in meeting the current financial needs. Approval of this resolution will amend the 2018 general fund budget to provide an $18,000 contribution to the Action Center.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, is there any presentation on this item?
There, there is not. The Action Center came in front of city council a few weeks ago and provided their request to city council. All the other cities, Jefferson County and the county are also looking at providing contributions as we speak. So we won't be the only agency providing funding.
Okay. And is there any member of the public here tonight who would like to come and talk on this issue? Seeing none, then I will open this up for any discussion from council. And I would like to start by adding that the, to my understanding, the, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Goff, the county government is going to match this dollar for dollar?
County government provided initial $50,000, and then they, yeah, they are providing a $200,000 match if all the cities come up with $200,000 also, which I believe is, is going to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Mr. Fitzgerald?
I was just going to say, I believe also that this is a prorated amount for our population, so other cities are paying according to their population.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Mr. Matthews?
I'll wait until we do the motion, then I'll do it during discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, and a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution 54-2018, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $18,000 for the Action Center.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Hoppe. Now we will have discussion on the motion. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the study session and prior to the study session, I went through our outside agency budget, or suggested budget, and added up that if we go to all the different agencies that do similar work, we were already committed to $42,000 a year. And this mounts to almost a 50% increase from that. And I realized they had some issues that caused them some shortfalls, but I would be against increasing that budget amount, especially by this amount, 50%, until we have a chance to go back to our outside agency for a 2019 budget. I don't, just don't think it's appropriate at this time. They had issues, but that's kind of what happens in life. And to come to us and beg for some more, I'm not sure I'm in favor at this time.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Comments? Ms. Duran?
Thank you. Can I confirm, this is just a one-time give, is it not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you. So the Jeffco Action Center has been in our community since 1968. That's before Wheat Ridge even incorporated as a city, and they have done a wonderful job, if you tour the facility, in providing the homeless population and those that are down on their luck with resources and needs. They help with the backpack program. They help with school supplies for low-income students. And I just really want to urge all of you to support this one-time ask and help them get back on their feet and continue to do good work in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Thank you very much. That concludes the business items on our agenda. We will move now to the city manager's matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will provide my time to the city treasurer. He has a few items to give you an update on, and I'll help answer any questions if they're ready.
Thank you very much. I will go to the treasurer after we go to our city attorney.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, then we're going to go to our city treasurer, Mr. Gerald de Tuleo.
Thank you. I asked the city clerk to pass out this project, purchase requisition for the Clear Creek Crossing. And so this will be $2,092,333.64 for the hook ramps. This purchase order I signed off on today, I wanted to give Patrick and staff a lot of kudos for this, because the Clear Creek Crossing management team has been asking for those funds, but we're really not giving any of these funds out until we know that they've been spent or they're ready to be spent. And so this will be transferred out of the 2E bond money tomorrow for the hook ramps and all of the associated work with the hook ramps for the Clear Creek Crossing project. I just wanted to give council a heads up. The city manager will be giving a report back on some of the other parts of the project, but we're actually starting to see some work going on now. And I wanted to, like I said, Patrick's been working hard on this with that management team from Clear Creek Crossing and Long Peaks Metro District, and I've been on his case not to give him any money until, and he wouldn't. But I mean, they wanted funds upfront, and now we're actually getting, we have the purchase order. We have the receipts. We have all the documentation. So we're working as we're supposed to work, and this money will come out of the 2E CCafe funds. So if you have any questions, you can either talk to me or talk to Mr. Goff about the, the project. But the hook ramps are on, hitting the ground running, hopefully. And then I have also passed out our first report for the 38th Avenue revenue, sales tax revenue. The 2017 numbers are unaudited. 2011 through 2016 are audited. Last year, I gave you the same report, but it was 2010 to 2016. And now we've dropped a year and added a year, which you can see that the city, there's, the bottom line has citywide total sales tax revenue for all four areas of the sub-area plan for 38th Avenue. Then right above that is the percentage of the funds, the total funds of the city, what 38th Avenue funds is a percentage of. And I'll mention in description that sales tax data is reflected for four areas within 38th Avenue Subarea Plan. The area not included in both sides of 38th Avenue from up of Street West to Wadsworth Boulevard, that's, that was added, that property was moved to the Town Center Subarea Plan for urban renewal. So like, I believe the Wazi Partners Project is not included in this, because that's part of the Town Center Apartment Subarea Plan and the urban renewal area. So that's why that was, that area was exempted by the voters for height and density and some other things. So I just wanted to give you this report. We'll be doing 44th Avenue shortly. And as far as the narrative goes of why revenues are up, that's your job to tell the public. I just give the numbers, and you can read it any way you want. But good news is, Clear Creek Crossing is moving forward on the ramp, hook ramps, and this is a good for our city that we're actually seeing our sales tax revenue on 38 still going up as we speak. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. de Tuleo.
Thank you.
Ms. Shaver?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll start with council up here. And why don't we start with Mr. Fitzgerald?
Nothing tonight.
We'll go to Mr. Urban.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Going down the line, Ms. Hoppe.
Myself and Councilor George Pond have requested for, to review the bulk plane as applied to all residential zones to be in a future study session. And so Mayor Protam has replied that he will be putting that on the schedule, and I just wanted to let people know.
Thank you so much. Ms. Duran?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pond?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Nothing. Thank you.
As you're cooperating. Ms. Dozeman, you'll have something for us?
No, thank you.
Nothing tonight? Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Not tonight.
Well, that, that leaves it to me. I want to thank all of you for being here. We've got a great city, got a lot of great things going on, and I hope you'll tune in two weeks from now when I think we have another meeting. With that, let us stand adjourned. Thank you.